I'm going to call this special meeting of the Board of Utilization to Order of Oklahoma County. Today is June tenth, twenty twenty five. It's nine thirty and we have a full house.
Mr. Brett Towns.
President.
Teresa Sellers.
President.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson. And notice that this meeting was properly posted on June fifth, twenty twenty five. We initially had six items on the agenda. Some have gone away. The last item on our agenda, six, B O E number one thirty eight is by phone. We're going to take that first so they don't get discouraged if they don't hear from us close to nine thirty. So this is B O E number one thirty eight.
Hello?
Hello, this is Ms. Thompson from the Board of Utilization. Who am I speaking?
You are speaking with Darlene Ness and my daughter, Kristen Portimacher.
Darlene and Kristen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so this is Ms. Thompson. We have a full house. We have three of us. We're all here today to hear your protest. This is an appellate review, which means we will consider any evidence you want to give us that you gave to the assessor in your informal hearing. And we're going to meet on Friday. We don't decide today. We'll meet on Friday. And we'll make our decision and you will be notified by mail. And I should warn you at first that this is a fair market value assessment. We're going to talk about what a buying, willing buyer and seller will pay for this property. We're not concerned with the taxable or your taxes. Okay, so my records indicate this is twenty four oh one Summit Drive. And the assessor has this valued at five hundred twenty thousand five hundred. And we're not to talk about that, I guess. Is this the one that we're talking about?
This is one thirty eight.
No, that's one thirty eight. I'm on the wrong. Which one is this?
No, one thirty eight is the one we're on.
That's the one we're on.
Thirty seven.
Oh, one thirty seven is the taxable? Okay.
One thirty eight is the one we're on.
Yes.
Okay, so what would you like to have us set the valuation at, Ms. Ness?
For my home or my taxable value?
No, we don't concern ourselves with the taxable value. We only concern ourselves with the fair market value. Do you disagree that your property is worth five hundred and twenty thousand five hundred?
Yes, I do, ma'am.
Okay, what do you think it should be?
I think it should be around four hundred forty thousand, which it was appraised at by a professional appraiser, plus twenty one thousand dollars for the top shed.
Okay, when was the date of your, of the appraisal?
In twenty twenty one, sorry, twenty twenty one. However, my house has depreciated considerably since then.
Okay, I'm going to tell you that we would not be considering an appraisal in twenty twenty one because that was three years ago. This is what was the correct fair market value of your property as of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. But I guess you're saying that you agreed with that valuation in twenty one and you think it never appreciated since then?
Oh, no, ma'am. I called in twenty twenty one.
Okay.
And I was told, well, don't worry about it because we have a taxable market value that is lower than that. So you don't get taxed on that appraisal. Or what they have down as the market value. See, I mean, this is one of the problems here. Every time we contact the assessor's office, we are given some other kind of information and it changes every time we call. And it looks like there are no criteria as to what constitutes a garage, an outdoor building, or even your property value because of everybody saying something different. And ma'am, whenever we have this four hundred and forty done in twenty twenty one appraised, that four hundred and forty thousand dollars, they already added that four hundred and fifty eight thousand five hundred. So there was already a difference there and it's only escalated, ma'am, since then.
Okay.
And horrifically, it went up almost two hundred thousand dollars, my market value, since twenty twenty one.
Okay, this is.
They told me in twenty twenty five, and that's what started this whole thing. My market value went up two hundred thousand dollars between twenty one and the end of twenty four.
Okay, this is the one where you had the shed and you had someone to say that the quality and depth of the concrete would not support a car and therefore it should not be considered a detached garage, right?
Yes, ma'am. So when we first considered building this top shed, we called the county assessor's office several different times. And we eventually ended up with all of our questions, speaking to the main gentleman in charge. I believe his name is Craig. And he told us, and we told him everything about this outbuilding, what our neighborhood was requiring of us, the size, all of the constructions, that it was being built by top shed, everything. And we spent a great deal of time discussing the door options because I was afraid. I had read that the door potentially could cause it to be labeled as a garage versus what it is in a top building. And he said, oh, no, no, they're fine based on everything that you told me. It doesn't have any utilities. Nothing is going to its outskirts. That it would be fine. And if they come out and they accidentally put it as a detached garage, just call me back. We won't have any problems. We'll be able to fix this. You know, he made no comment about the size of it or anything. So then, once we get this new appraisal from them saying that it's a detached garage, we reached out to Michael, who then took several different attempts to talk to everybody about this. And then they came back and said, well, ma'am, it has to do with the size of it. Which I had already discussed with everybody the size, because the size had never changed. It's only six hundred square feet, so it's not like it's some massive thing that it still should be labeled as an outbuilding. So every single time that we talked to them, they changed, well, is it the door causing it? We offered to change the door back out to, you know, barn style doors versus a roll up typical garage style door. We just did that for my mom's medical equipment to get that in and out a little bit easier. So we're getting just different things, mixed emotions from them about this and no block and white concrete information. And since then, I have looked in our neighborhood to compare other outbuildings and there are three in particular concerns that are well over a thousand square feet. One of them sixteen hundred square feet, the other one seventeen hundred, and the other one thirteen hundred, that are all labeled as outbuildings. And our small six hundred square foot is not able. And there are several other outbuildings even that are labeled as the N A V, the no added value ones even, that are in a very close, like five hundred square feet, three to five hundred square feet. That are close inside to ours that are even no added value or even, you know, outbuilding. So we just feel like that this is not fairly being judged against A, our neighborhood, or B, any actual regulations set. Because if they would have said it can't be greater than five hundred square feet, we could have changed it to go within their determination of five hundred to stay within an outbuilding versus a detached garage. But they don't have anything that says it has to be this type of door, this type of door. They literally have changed on us every single time that we've spoken with them. And then the other thing that they changed, when she called, you know, we called to investigate. We did not leave any stone unturned. And so she called and asked how much is this telling them what we were doing going to cost in our taxes. And we were told twenty five dollars a year. And at that point, he looked at some of the other outbuildings in our neighborhood and said, yes, based on what I think they'll be in charge versus similar sizing, we think it'll cost you an extra twenty five dollars a year. He didn't say a month, a year. And the number that they brought up was astronomical compared to what we were told that they were going to do. And yes, ma'am, you brought up the concrete. So even in all of our discussion with them, because the man who did it, I, he had always told me when we do forged concrete, it is not enough to support a vehicle. And we have told them that every time that they've come out and in our communications with them on the phone, and he submitted a letter stating we were told that this was not supportive enough for vehicles, because we never intended for vehicles to be on here anyway, so that wasn't concerning to us. But that it also, in his determination, shouldn't be listed as a detached garage because it shouldn't support any type of vehicle. When we first talked to him, even he had even said a zero term lawnmower shouldn't even go on top of it. So we never ever thought that this garage issue would be such because we had talked to everybody, the builder, the concrete person, and we talked to the county assessor. And you say with what we have done in this, my increase for this top shed over the year between twenty four and twenty five was six hundred and sixty dollars a year. It increased my taxes. This is ridiculous.
So I have two questions to ask. First of all, I know we asked you earlier, but I need clarification on what you think the property should be valued at? I heard you say four forty plus something else?
Twenty one.
Well, the twenty one thousand is the cost of the top shed. So that, that to us is concrete. You know, obviously we don't do this every single day, but we had an appraisal in twenty twenty one that is a concrete thing that we did not create that number. I'm supporting four hundred and forty thousand dollars, but they said that a home was the worst because I needed a I needed another mortgage on that. I am elderly and on a fixed income. And this is in the supporting my daughter and her four children. I happen to do that. And so I had to refinance my house in order to pay our bills. Everybody knows how food is going up tremendously. And so this is what we had to discover, I got a Discover loan for my mortgage. And this is how we know what they appraised the house at. They're giving me, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that's what they appraised the house at. And when I called, they said, oh, don't worry about that, you know, because it's not near your taxable value. So my big concern here is, as I said in my rebuttal to you, what difference does it make what my, I mean, what my market value is if the county assessor is going to raise my taxable market value? The statistics, in twenty twenty four, there was a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars difference between my market value and taxable market value. And today, there is only a, as my partner put it, a thirty thousand dollars. Whereas my neighbors have well over a hundred thousand dollars difference between their market value and their taxable market value. So, you know, I guess the county assessor thought they were going to keep me quiet because they lowered the market value. But that didn't do me any good when they took off a hundred thousand dollars of my add on to my taxable market value. So there's only a thirty thousand dollar difference. And I want to know why there was a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars difference between those two numbers in twenty twenty four. And now there's only a thirty thousand dollar difference, you see? Because I'm not being taxed on my market value. I'm being taxed on the taxable market value.
And what year did you?
I don't know where they pulled it out.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. What year did you build that top shed?
We built it in twenty twenty four.
Okay, let me, let me hear from the assessor.
All right. The Ness residence is off of East Oregon Mill and North Coltrane in Edmond. Let me pull up the map. South of West Oak Street. And here's an aerial. We got bribed over here, Coltrane right here, and here's the subject property. And here's an aerial of the subject property. And this is the new detached, what we have classified at the moment as a detached garage. The twenty twenty five value before everything took place was six hundred and forty four thousand five hundred. We did lower the value down to five hundred and twenty thousand five hundred. The reason for that is Vanessa's, Ms. Ness had stated that there had been some wear and tear with the, with the property, house itself. So we did a, a field check is what we call it when we go out there. We send one of our appraisers out there to do some assessment of the property. And it was determined that the original house, this portion right here, roof needs to be, has some like minor issues. Roof needs to be replaced and some electrical. And there's some kind of a structural issue in on the back porch where the ceiling is bowing down. This is the add on back here, which was done sometime back in two thousand four. The add on portion has more serious issues like unsealed windows, broken windows, unsealed siding, numerous cracks in the brick veneer. So what we did is we put the account, typically every house we have on is average condition. We lowered it to fair condition with a negative ten percent adjustment. The reason why we have the detached garage still classified as detached garage is because the exterior is the same as the house itself. And because of, I guess, H O A rules, they couldn't have the original structure of the top shed stayed the way it stayed the way that it was originally constructed. So they had to do a brick exterior around the structure. And based on the appearance of it, that's not what you would call a typical outbuilding. That's a little bit more expensive than an outbuilding because of the brick exterior. And we did lower the, the new construction value of the property originally was at forty three thousand five hundred. But because of the report that was provided by Ms. Ness, we did look at that and we did decide to lower the new construction value down to the permit value of twenty one thousand nine hundred. So obviously, we are not talking about taxable value, but I do want to point out that the original taxable value on the property was five eleven nine fifty eight. So when we lowered the market value to five twenty five hundred, because of the new construction value being lowered, the taxable value was also lowered to four hundred ninety thousand three hundred and fifty eight. And I do want to point out they are the original owners of the property. And then I do want to point out there have been, there's been many sales going back to at least twenty two. We have eight sales. And it's a, I support a median value of five hundred forty five thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars. And they are currently at five hundred twenty thousand five hundred after all the adjustments.
Did you send those comps to the assessor?
No, so there were, there were comps that were originally ran. This was because there weren't, there weren't a lot of sales to go off of, so I just kind of looked at where the value was and wanted to see how it was lined up with everything else and we could still support where the value is. I did want to point out that the last year's value was five hundred and ninety two thousand and twenty three. It was five hundred and sixty eight five hundred. And twenty two, it was five hundred two thousand five hundred. And then go back to twenty one, it was, I had it four hundred fifty eight thousand five hundred.
Yeah, I think her concern is with the taxable.
Right, it is.
Yes. And the classification on this shed. Yes, and if you look at my rebuttal on page five of the seven, do you have that book in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, and here's a couple of comparable properties in age to my house and square footage. And the first one is twenty five hundred Summit Drive. The difference between the market and the taxable value is a hundred and forty three thousand dollars, as you see. And the other one is a hundred and sixteen thousand, another one ninety nine thousand. And I went through and I didn't, I didn't have, I didn't want to bore you with all the facts. And so in my neighborhood, for any of the houses that are similar to mine, they're over a hundred or around a hundred, if not a whole lot more. Thousand dollar difference between the taxable market value and the market value.
But Michael, would you like to explain when the cap comes off, why the cap comes off? Because that kind of explains why those taxable value differences.
We heard anything about it coming off.
So Ms. Ness, I've mentioned this before. This is Michael. I worked your informal appeal. So I have explained to you before that, and this is, this is when it comes to anyone. Yes, you do have home state exemption on your property and you do go up three percent every year. That is, that is the cap, three percent. But anytime you make valued improvements to your property, the cap comes off because you've got to factor in the new construction value of the property. So it's not just the three percent, but then it's also going to be on top of that the new construction value of the property. And then it will start over at three percent again. But anytime you make improvements, value improvements to the property, that cap comes off for the year. And then it, and then the cap will come back on. So that's why the cap came off is because of those valued improvements.
And that would make, that would make, excuse me, that would make a difference. You can't really compare the, the gap between taxable and market of your neighbors. If they've done nothing to the house, they are still on the three percent cap. You came off the three percent cap, so you can't say why is there only a thirty thousand dollar difference in mine, but there's a hundred thousand dollar difference in my neighbor's? But I.
Do you have a question about the three percent cap?
Yes.
There's thing that comes off. What does it go to?
There isn't one.
So it's unlimited? Because I have read something.
For one year.
And unlimited, potentially.
For one, no, for one, for one year and then the cap comes back on at the three percent. Next year, the.
So it's unlimited plus the construction value?
It adjusts to the fair market value at that point. And then the cap, then the three percent cap comes on. I would like to say something. As we've looked at this, since two thousand twenty one, Oklahoma County, and this is just on the average, has increased forty four percent on the fair market value of the homes. The way they've adjusted yours, yours now has only increased twenty percent.
Yeah, but it's depreciated tremendously over that time.
It's depreciated?
Yes.
Yeah.
But this is.
Wait, wait, okay, just one moment. Where does the mic?
Well, I do want to point out that for as long as, Ms. Ness, just for as long as your property is currently the way it is, now I'm not talking about the detached garage structure. I'm talking about the house itself. For as long as that property has those issues from this point on forward until you get them fixed, those negative adjustments are going to stay on your property. So next year, if you get another value on your property, when you get another value on your property, just know that those adjustments are going to stay on there until everything gets fixed. So you have, you have that. I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that.
Listen, let me ask a question. What for the, for your blue arrow is, what is that?
So this is the main, this is the original main structure.
Yes.
This was the second structure that was added on back in two thousand four.
What is it?
It's, it's, it's basically, we have it as one house.
Okay.
But this is a kind of a breezeway or a, an area, another first floor space that connects. And then this right here is the new detached garage structure.
Okay.
Is the garage, which side is the garage on, garage door?
Right here.
East.
Of the original garage?
On that.
Top shed.
It's on the east side of the house. I mean, it's the east side of the house building.
Okay.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Might I address that a little bit about the cap?
Yes.
The cap is not actually list lifted. The cap is still in place, or we like refer to it as a limitation. But there is an additional value to that for the new construction. So to say that the cap is lifted is, is a bit misleading. It is actually still in place, but additions are added to that taxable value.
The cap lifts when it sells.
The cap lifts when it sells. That is correct.
But the construction only costs twenty one thousand dollars.
And?
The where the market value went up.
Ma'am, I don't know how many times I can say to you that we do not consider the taxable value. We consider the fair market value. So you, if you are saying that you think the fair market value, what you sell your house for right now, if you think that's limited to four hundred and forty, that is the consideration we will make. Five hundred and twenty thousand five hundred versus your four. Five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-five-hundred versus your four-hundred-and-forty-thousand.
Yes, because that is the, you know, the legal documentation that we have to stand on versus just our opinion of that. But can they also give us a determination as to what, um, what legal rules that they have to walk through versus an outbuilding versus the, any of these and no added value type, um, outbuilding versus a detached garage? Because from what I mentioned earlier, it seems to change every single time. The size was never an issue in all of our previous communications. And then when Michael and his office reviewed this again, he came back and said that it was the size that caused the detached garage determination. And I showed you there are these three other properties in our neighborhood that are listed as outbuildings that are well over a thousand square feet. One of them sixteen hundred, one of them seventeen hundred, and one of them thirteen hundred. And they are listed as outbuildings.
Can I ask a question about those? Are they made of the same construction and appearance as the houses that they, where, where they are?
I know some of them have bricks on it, um, yes. And yes, I believe even the one on twenty-four oh one, twenty, twenty-five oh four Rockford is very similar to that home, um.
What it, and, and, and what are they used for?
Oh ma'am, I, I don't know. And if you want me to go interview my neighbors, I think.
No, no.
The other one on twenty-three oh one Summit Drive is a new add in two thousand twenty-two. Just two doors down from me. Um, it's right next to a big garage. It's like a cabana and then also attached to it is a five-hundred-and-fifty square foot, um, building. But also, I mean, it's done very nicely as well. So we just don't feel like this is being judged consistently across the board.
See, we have any misinformation that she's mentioning. Those addresses don't match the documentation in our file. I have one set of comps, it looks like, but it doesn't, none of the addresses match what she's saying. This, I think the ones that we have is maybe the difference between the market and taxable value, but I don't see this listing of.
No, we didn't submit this on here. We didn't want to overwhelm you with. I, I didn't know whether you would even read this documentation that we submitted, um, because it just asked for value. So we weren't sure whether you would even read that part of what we submitted or if it would all be verbal today.
No, we consider whatever is submitted, but we just limit, because this is not a very, you're not getting a new hearing as though you never had one before for a determination. This is an appeal of a ruling that was made when you had your informal with the assessor's office. I think we've kind of heard enough and we understand. But I, I just want to emphasize to you that the Board of Equalization only concerns itself with fair market value, not taxable value. And I understand that people have this belief that there's some correlation between fair market paying in their taxes and people don't like to pay more in taxes. We do not concern ourselves with that. So we're gonna, I'm gonna end the hearing and tell you that on Friday when we make our decision, we will be looking at whether the fair market value of your house as it stands today is five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-five-hundred or whether it is four-hundred-and-forty-thousand or something in between. That's what we're going to decide. And you will get notice in writing probably Monday or Tuesday probably at the latest as to what our decision was. Okay?
Okay, ma'am, so one last thing. So you can't rule on it being an outbuilding versus a detached garage either?
No. But I, but I'm, I'm gonna say, the last thing I'm gonna say to you, then I am really gonna end the hearing. I think you misunderstand if whether or not it's that important that it's a garage or not. You have a structure that looks like the house, that contains brick, looks like the house, and it adds some value to your property. And that's really the issue is whether the fair market value can correctly consider this new structure on your property. Does that make sense to you? I hope it does. Okay. All right, you, thank you, I thank you for the information that you gave us and you will be hearing from us in writing next week.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate.
All right, thank you. Now we're gonna do one twenty-four.
We're going back to the beginning. So one twenty-four is the one that's not kind of right.
I gotta just say for the record. Because it's on the, it's on the, um, agenda. BOE number one twenty-four is the one. The gentleman's not available again. Okay, so we'll pass on one twenty-four. Go to, now are we going to item two on the agenda?
Okay, we need to formally state last one.
Yes, and Mr. Pio is, uh, has been given the consideration to move his hearing twice and this is the last one. So if he doesn't come when it's set the next time, we're gonna, he won't get a chance to dispute. Okay. Item two on the agenda is BOE number one thirty-two. Are we considering that? Has that one been settled or are we gonna talk about?
Agreed upon value.
It's agreed upon value.
Okay, what is it?
For one thirty-two, which is the Lively Hotel, uh, at twenty-one oh one Northwest Fiftieth Street, our recommendation is twenty-six million nine-nine-five-four-one-eight.
Agreed, we are agreed.
Okay.
I'd like to move on to item number two, beginning with one thirty-two. We set fair market value of this property at twenty-six million nine-nine-five-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
A second.
Um, how do you vote, Mr. Town?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
I vote yes. You, you have the, do you have one thirty-four as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Could just, could you explain to me why, well, you can't. This is the one, what, two of these had the same number. Is this the two? No? We just settled one, R two one nine one five ten forty, right? Okay, now we're gonna open BOE number one thirty-four. And it's R two one nine one five one oh five oh. They have the same number?
No, one's ten forty, one is fifty.
Oh, sorry, okay. But I, my eyes kept seeing that. I thought, how can they have the same? Okay, did you settle this one as well?
Yes, we did. Our recommendation for the Pottery Barn, uh, is, is three million one thirty-nine six thirty-six.
So I'll make a motion on BOE one thirty-four.
We are on agreement.
Okay, so I'll make a motion on BOE one thirty-four, item number three on the agenda. Set fair market value of three million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second. Uh, how do you vote, Ms. Ellen?
Yes.
Mr. Town?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, I, I know that our quotes are already good. I'm just curious, is, are you the person that said that the Omni was the premier hotel and that, and that you thought that your valuation should be less than theirs, but it's valued at more? This the one I read?
That, that may have been it. I didn't say that. But, but I, I somewhat agree that the Omni is the premier hotel in the, in the city right now. So what, what we were just comparing per room or per key to that. So that, that's what the comparison was.
A, a little bit of background.
Just to let you know that we do read all this. I'm glad.
A little bit of background on this is that this is a very confusing property in that this is a new lively hotel. But it also has the Tommy Bahamas on it and then three, four retail spaces that are still in shell space. But for some reason or another, they're all on one property or one parcel.
One parcel.
And that's where the confusion was is because we first saw it, we thought it was operating as all one entity, but it's not. So the owners are gonna have a terrible time trying to keep up with evaluations within. Because we had to value the Tommy Bahamas separately, the Lively Hotel separately, and then what's going to become new retail space.
And I had been up there. The pads are different. I, I always thought when you had a pad, you gave it a different lot number. No?
No, no, not necessarily. No, I mean.
There are separated up into different parcels throughout that old complex there. Yeah, it is. And for us, that does make it nice to me that you have, you're not trying to segregate out every single improvement on that and dispersing camp charges. So I do like that it's separated around, but what he's saying is that the footprint of that lot for the lively is, is just one parcel. But then you have those different aspects. The hotel, the restaurant, there's another restaurant at the top and then retail on the bottom. So we were able to segregate out those, get, get by those sections and come over the value.
Now, who are you?
Doug Savage.
Oh, okay, you're, sorry, okay. Well, I guess we'll probably see again this year.
I think this next one is his as well.
Oh, okay. One thirty, yes. Okay, so one thirty-six is R one twenty-five six five ten twenty-nine. We talked about the neighbor's valuation. So the, the assessor has it at one million one hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight. And you want seven hundred and ninety thousand one hun- one hundred and fifty-four?
Actually, that value is the seven. So what we're disputing is just the land value. There's a paved area that we're not disputing. So if you, uh, take the, um, the land value is seven fifty, is I believe what they're asking. And then adding back in the parking lot values, I think, two fifty.
Where is this?
So the parking area that he's talking about is right there on that area. And that is apparently part of the car dealership there to the north. And the car dealer, the owners of the, of that also own this vacant tract down to the south.
That is correct.
Okay, so that's why the land value is actually three fifty a foot. And then on top of that is the paving area to that.
Uh-uh, did you get that?
Well, there is an improvement value, but it's not a building. It's just paving area. It's, it's just paving that apparently serves the car dealership. But they also left the large portion there that's gray or whatever as unimproved.
So what are we disputing here? Because he indicated we was just disputing the land value.
So we, so what, what we're getting at is the land portion, the nine, it's nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and then the additional, uh, value, two hundred, just shy of two hundred and fifty is the value of the, the, the parking lot there. So what we're looking at is just the value of the land. And what we're saying is the land that this is, the vacant land just south that he mentioned that we also own, it's on a two twenty-five a foot. The land, uh, um, on this partial subject is a three fifty a foot. We're just acting for it to be the same. We don't feel that dirt's worth any more than the other dirt. So if you take, you know, two fifty a foot for, you know, and then add back in, we're not speeding the value of the concrete or, or the parking lot. We're just.
But, but that's, that's three fifty, right?
So just the land itself is being valued at three fifty.
And you disagree with that?
Yes.
So the nine fifty that you said was the value for the land, is that your valuation or the assessor's?
That's the assessor's valuation.
And you want the land to be?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
And what's the twen- difference in the twenty now? Seven, forty thousand is what? If you say seven fifty, I, I'd say ninety. So what's this? There a forty thousand dollar difference? There is.
No, two hundred thousand dollar difference in the land.
Fifty to ninety is forty. The paperwork indicates you want the value seven hundred and ninety thousand.
So. I apologize for a second. Yes, I, I apologize for a second. I, John had built this case. I kind of got thrown to be at the end. So let me look exactly what he's done.
I know math now, so fifty to ninety is forty.
Now, confirm with me, Steve, if you want. Nine fifty two twelve is the land value. That calculates at seventy-one, two hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine square feet comes to three fifty a foot. Is that correct?
Three fifty times two seventy-one four eighty-nine should be the nine fifty two twelve.
That is correct, at three fifty a foot, correct? Now, what we're saying is that if we take that at two twenty-five, so we're at two seventy-one four eighty-nine square feet. So we're showing that nine fifty and two twenty-five a foot is six ten eight fifty. And then we add back in the lot value. What is the value of the improvements?
Two forty-seven, one seventy-six.
I'm saying two fifty. I'm not doing that.
That's, so we come to eight fifty-eight oh twenty-six. Taking the two twenty-five a square foot on the lot, just like the parcel below it, adding back in the county's value on the improvements, we come to eight fifty-eight oh twenty-six. So we would like to revise trusted value to that.
What is the use of that land that you're saying ought to be valued the same?
I think they're eventually gonna build a, uh, more car lot there. Is, is what I anticipate, what they're gonna do with it.
But the land for the, the business.
And this is my.
You, you, you want the land that the business is on to be valued at the same as the vacant one? Why?
Well, they're both commercial lots, is, is all I'm saying. The other one, just because it had some parking on it, it's not really a structure. They're still commercial real estate, commercial lots. So that commercial lot, it's not like it's residential, but it should be valued the same per foot. So it's not on as agnew. Well, it's not, it's not on as agnew. It's on a commercial, so. But what I, yeah, so the yellow lot is the, is the subject.
Yes.
And then the one right next to it, as you can see, it's at two twenty-five a foot. So that's where we're coming up with our rationale. We just want the land to be the same and then add back in the, and that with, at two twenty-five a foot, at two hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet, uh, and then adding back into two fifty for the.
Okay, so we're still, uh, almost two hundred thousand difference. What do you, what do you say, Mr. Assessor?
I say that they bought the property, the same ownership bought the property, uh, developed the, uh, car dealership and they left this piece open eventually. It looks like they, they may have, I don't know when they actually added this, this parking area that's outside the, the boundary or the, uh, blue line right there. But obviously, they can, uh, eventually develop that. Now, the property to the south, I think the reason why that one is still on, slide that up, please, Michael. Push up. The one that he's comparing to, this one right here, right? Okay, so that is still in the name of the developer and typically the developer rates are still in place. I mean, you know, and it, it may still be low, you know, but it's still the developer's rate probably. Because it's been there for quite a while. But that's his argument is that they're not the same. We just say is that, well, they're part, that they have the possibility of adding to that one. And you can see that they actually did add to the, the top, by the north end of that. So anyway, we did provide sales that, uh, that they, uh, that was believed by the jury person that, uh, that held our value to be sound. And so that's.
That's what you raised at three fifty for the land value.
But it has been there for quite some time. Now, you know that I've gone up and down Northwest Highway and a lot of these, uh, dealerships, uh, over the years. But because this is sitting on the backside of the, uh, of the frontage of the highway, it is discounted somewhat.
Which dealership would be?
Uh, I, I don't know which one is right there on this one.
This is, in this, like the Bob Howard.
This one.
Bob's, there it is, Bob Morgan V, yeah, dog.
So I would have, I could, these are the sales that were provided. And then, did you get this map that's kind of just highlights? So all the, the only thing we would point out, the two, if you look at the size. Okay, look at the size. The ones that we highlighted are the only two lots that are over, uh, three acres where we are. Couple of those lots are under an acre, point three one acres. So if you eliminate those ones that aren't comparable in size, then the, the other two are two dollars a square foot and I think two sixty-eight square foot.
So you're saying you didn't like the assessor's comps?
I didn't think they were comparable. I think two of them were. And if you just highlight those two, one's at two dollars a square foot, one's at two sixty-eight. We're currently at.
But other than the cost, why didn't you find them comparable? Was there something regarding the location or the property?
The size.
The size of the property.
The size of the property is, is the difference. And we're looking at vacant lots and that's, you know, it's obviously a smaller lot's gonna be worth more per, per foot than a, you know, sort of twenty-acre lot. It's just.
Size of the lot specifically?
Yes, ma'am. But the assessor, uh, I'll. But the assessor, uh, I'll point out, Steve and, and his whole staff and everybody, they always work really good with this. This is, and we're close on this one, we're not that far apart. So, you know, we would just ask that the board consider the info we've given. If, if you, if you feel that it should be equalized, then, you know, put us on there. If not, like I said, we, we, uh, we enjoy working with these guys, they do a great job. This is one, we just wanted to maybe have a second set of eyes on it.
Okay, normally, I give you the last word, but I'm here, Steve, last one.
I, I would just say...
He doesn't like it when it would be all, it wouldn't.
Who am I saying? Uh, I just think if you, when he zooms out of this thing, you can see how much of this area is developed. So, probably the sales that she got, uh, were probably about the best she could find within the area. If you look at the map, you can show that there are, you know, reasonable, uh, distance from the subjects, but it is unfortunate they're not quite, you know, larger, but, uh, but that's all I've got.
Okay. Okay, so, you heard me say we're, well, you get a notice from us in mail?
Yes, ma'am.
In writing in the mail, either depending on how it travels, probably my head.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Beattie.
All right.
Thank you, sir. How's it?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. You've emailed a couple times.
Yes, sir.
All right, just take care.
All right.
Thank you.
So, close the hearing and open up one thirty-seven. Probably designated one-one-three-three-seven-zero-three-three-five. Um, it's residential, it's applying for tax exempt status. And I looked up the section that's at debate, and it is, uh, religious or church owned retirement centers, nursing homes. So, this information you're giving me, you gave to the assessor?
I did, I seen this too this morning, um...
No, but it's informal.
Um, no, this is new information.
This, what does the assessor say?
I have not had a chance to review it.
Okay, you, we're, we're not supposed to, if she objects, we're not gonna consider it.
Okay.
Tell me what you...
It's a letter of explanation that should have been included with the application for the board to hear my argument.
Okay.
I felt like and noted in the form allotted that there was not enough space, and so I put together something on letterhead that was a little bit more formal of the explanation. Yeah, I, I, I feel it's in line with what you all are evaluating.
But tell me, what, what did you say to them that they rejected to give you this assumption? Um, this is a res, tell me where this was, sixty-five sixteen South Villa?
Yes, ma'am. It, it backs up to the Hidden Trails, of course.
Okay. It's a house?
It is, yes.
Okay, and tell me why you're asking for it to be taxed.
Yeah. So, I founded this nonprofit organization that is a five oh one C three organization in twenty fourteen, whenever I lived in Norman, Oklahoma. So, this is not like I just went and did this six weeks ago, or rather, three years ago when I bought the house. This is an established five oh one C three.
Okay.
This is the main headquarters of all operations for the Sequoia House Foundation, and it will remain that way.
Okay.
It is the only entity that operates in that, uh, in that, in that space. Um, my hope is, um, so I celebrate four years of sobriety on July the first this year. And so, my hope is to, to grow into a sober living environment. I was there, uh, in Edmund, at a sober living house for a year before I found this one. Uh, but it, I think that my request for, for non-taxable value falls in line with what the state statutes are, as I've mentioned in this letter.
Okay. But this is a single residence?
It is.
And its present use is?
That it operates this Sequoia House Foundation.
Okay.
You live in the house as well?
I do.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But are you the only person that lives in?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, it is the sole, the sole use is, is non-taxable.
Okay.
So, what do you do?
Um, so, we do outreach to the homeless community. Um, I walked the streets for five years homeless before I got into treatment, and so I have a very near and dear space for what is a, a, a big epidemic in our community. Um, I think for eighteen hundred people to sleep outside is an atrocity. And, uh, thirty-five percent of those folks are veterans, okay? And so, um, this is such a great appeal that even our governor invited me to sit as a voting member on the board, uh, for the Governor's Council on Homelessness, which I have included those emails in that form I just handed you. I felt like that that was important information to consider, and I apologize. Uh, it wasn't that I kept it from the assessor, it, you know, it just goes to show some character about what it is I'm requesting. I mean, I'm certainly not a fly-by-night individual. Um, there's also an email in there from, um, it was just actually...
When did you buy this house?
Uh, it would be three years this, well, just this past May twenty-second, so three years ago.
And you lived in it the whole three years?
Uh, I have. So, so aside from that, it's been under pretty massive remodel construction. I, so I built houses for twenty years before, um, I guess semi-retiring. Um, that's what I did right out of high school and college. I worked for Ideal Homes, and then I ran my own construction company. Um, being in the business, uh, and then coming to Oklahoma City and seeing people standing outside and sleeping in the cold is frustrating. Uh, it's more than frustrating, it is, it, it, it pains me, and, and I... The reason it pains me is because I spent my life building houses for people. Why in the world would we ever want someone to sleep outside? It's not really for this board to consider, I just want you to know why it is that I find a calling to do what I do. Um, you know, the, when I say I do outreach, so, so sometimes the house is, um, a location where people can come and get showers, or clean their clothes, or even apply for benefits and, and to do things that are important. Now, of course, the GCH has been, uh, reduced down to what is just the ICH, that the governor dropped his, his claim to, but it's a volunteer position, right, ma'am? So, uh, one of the things that's transpired over the last year is a, a wonderful trailer that was donated, LG, uh, gave washers and dryers and a conference table, and this, this entity that goes around the city and helps people clean their clothes, and then offers them, you know, services, that's one way, and that works for certain folks, right? Um, I work primarily, because it is just me, um, and I work primarily with a referral basis, because I wanna deal with people that have a, um, a real calling to, to, to change in their life, you know? Um, that's important to me.
Is this your first time to ask for this property?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How does, uh, is it city of Oklahoma City or more?
Uh, city of Oklahoma City, and thank you for asking.
How do they classify this? Residential?
So, the water bill is in the nonprofit's entity's name and, and uses the five oh one C three.
How about zoning, though?
Uh, so it's zoned residential? Yeah. And, and I would prefer that. I don't, I mean, up and down Fifty-Ninth Street, there's a lot of residences that are zoned, zoned commercial. I have no interest in doing that, and I have no interest in changing the zoning to multifamily, and it will always be a single-family home.
Okay, we're here for Mr. Assessor.
Hi, hello, I'm Jennifer, we go from the county assessor's office. I had received Mr. Nelson's application for the Sequoia House Foundation, uh, for the property at sixty-five sixteen South Villa Avenue. When I received the application, I, you know, began like I usually do, I start researching the organization. I quickly found, there was really no information out there, didn't find a website. There was no contact information, I couldn't find a phone number, um, a name to contact, aside from what he provided me on the application. There was no social media platform. So, if I'm having this much trouble finding any information, I don't see how somebody who needs assistance is gonna find this information. Um, he also submitted a video that I'd like to show. Quick little video. Explaining his organization.
There's a bunch of talking right now, so I don't know where the audio is. It is helpful. Sorry.
There was a tone.
Michael, I could play it on my phone, if that helped, if we could start at the same time.
You're pretty, I'm guessing it just says what the right one...
Sure, it, it pretty much does this. I'm gonna start over.
Are you saying that you have meetings in this house?
Um, no, no, not so. I, I'm glad that you asked the question, because I, I would like to address what the concern was about having trouble finding, you know, us. So, that's, that's almost by design. I, I don't want there to be twenty-five people standing on my porch, okay? And, and so that's why I mentioned that this is a referral-only program. And, and that's, that's very common, you know? I, I only found this, the sober living place that I lived at in Edmund, Oklahoma, because I was at Rob's Ranch, right? And, and, and so they don't advertise either, you know? And, 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 and I don't know even Joe Pello. I don't think he has one advertisement for his sober, the new houses.
Okay. I'll let the assessor to meet her on.
I'm sure, I didn't mean to either.
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna see if Michael can get back to that slide, but I did make copies for you guys here. Um, that's a slide I just wanted to show you. It shows, you know, call us today, but again, there's no information. Who are you supposed to call? There's not a phone number, it's not a name, who do you reach out to? And then also, you know, full list of our services. Thirty min, the free thirty-minute video consultation. So, what happens after that? You know, they begin to charge, or, you know, what is the next step for, you know, these people?
How are you? Well, I'll wait in that center in a second.
I, um, I did receive this application on April second from Mr. Nelson. Um, I called him that same day to request the articles and bylaws for this organization, because he did not submit those. He let me know he'd get those to me by the end of the week. I actually didn't receive those until April twenty-second via email. As I was reviewing those, um, the articles and bylaws weren't executed until April sixteenth, which was two weeks after he submitted his application, which, you know, you did hear him that this organization has been around since twenty fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
So, I found that kind of odd.
May I, may I speak for that?
No, let, let, okay, listen.
Another thing is, the Sequoia House Foundation is applying, um, at fifty-five sixteen, the, um, Villa Avenue, which is Mr. Nelson's primary residence. Um, in twenty twenty-three, he did apply for homestead on the property, which I would like to show you now here. Um, homestead is a benefit for homeowners who own and occupy. And one of the requirements is that this has to be your primary residence, which he indicates by his signature at the bottom. And then another thing I wanna point out is, one of the questions is, is any of the property described used as commercial? And he marks no. And so, this property is also not zoned to have a business to be run out of it. On his application on the OTC nine eighty-eight, when it asks the usage of the property, it states, um, that the property is used as a residence. So, this is his primary residence.
But that was when he, that was when homestead was first applied for?
Correct.
Three years ago?
Twenty twenty-three. But also on the application submitted on April second.
Okay.
The usage is stated as, um, a residence. And let me give you these as well. These are just the statutes. According to the Oklahoma Constitution, any property that is used exclusively for charitable and religious purposes may be exempt from out-of-alarm taxes. Oklahoma statutes states that any property exclusively and directly for charitable purposes. And then we also have case law that emphasizes that the use of the property must be charitable. So, just merely having a five oh one C three for your organization does not automatically exempt you, um, from out-of-alarm taxes. This is his personal home. Um, he hasn't established the usage of the property for charitable purposes, which is why we denied the application.
May I add some commentary?
Assessor done.
I thought the section that, uh, when I looked it up, it was the one religious owned retirement.
The, uh, there's two.
It's actually section nine that you're speaking about, I think.
The top, it's the constitution. The second page would be the statute, which would be on the second page of the statute. It's highlighted. Go to the next page, number nine.
And my request is made under section nine of that same statute issued in twenty forty-four.
I see.
I, I, I only wanted to add, so, so, um, Mr. Townes, great of you to ask about the primary funding. So, so we receive, or had in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, some Walmart foundational grants that we get from, uh, got from, uh, different Walmarts across the country. Uh, it's a really, really lengthy process to get approved for the Walmart, Walmart foundational grants. Um, that was primary to, or that was previous to my homelessness. Um, a portion of that time that I spent out on the street was at the governor's report, uh, you know, to speak about some of the things that are happening. And the position I filled on the board was to, in lived experience, right? And so, so the governor's council felt like that it was important to have someone who had, had boots on the ground, right? And, and, and there's not a bunch of people just rearing to go live out on the street. And so, I think it's a very, very important piece of this to understand that, yes, it's my primary residence, but I'm not married, I don't have any children. You know, it's not like I have five kids and, and a wife, and this is where it is, that we, we build our family. This is my life. This is my legacy, and I think that that's a very unique situation. I don't know very many people that are that committed to, well, let me give a phrase.
Would the zoning permit you to do that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So, what I choose to do with my time is, is, is fine, and, and I find that actually within the statute and, and the definition of the statute, if I so choose to, to run my nonprofit entity, and that seems to be the primary function of my life, because it is, then I think that I, I fit into a very unique, uh... I'm, I'm not gonna say crack in the system, but I think that I meet both expectations. It can be my primary residence, and it can be used exclusively for tax exemption purposes, because that's all that I do.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Um, may I respond to his funding and grants? I did look on the Oklahoma Secretary of State under the charity's solicitors. His organization is not listed on there.
That's true.
Is there any precedence to apply a percentage of a parcel to a residence and then a nonprofit? Like, if a house was valued at two hundred thousand dollars, you lived in part of it, uh, much like if you had a commercial business, like I had a tax craft and I lived in the other half? Is there any precedent, is there anything that's ever been done that's split?
Yeah.
Or residence, okay?
And he's not requesting that, he's requesting a hundred percent.
Sure. Could the, could the, could the board? Could the board apply that even though he didn't request it? That standard, that we imply half of that property is exempt and the other half is residential?
Um, I think it would have to be set up. Okay, like by square footage?
You decide that it really should be prorated, and you can designate and determine what part is actually directly used for that charitable purpose. You could ask the assessor to prorate. I mean, it'd be difficult to deal, we have stuff to do, and I think you could prorate.
Just, sometimes we don't know the powers we have, because sometimes we're pressed in these situations.
Yeah, the case law is very old, it goes back to, um, a building with multiple floors.
Right.
Where one floor was leased out, pulled these for commercial purposes, and the other two were directly used.
Or they converted their, yeah. Where they might have converted their garage to an office, and the rest of the house is now the residence, so...
So, that's what you recall.
Okay.
It's wonderful that you suggested, and I will offer an open invitation to everyone present. You're welcome to come down and see the home anytime, day or night, I'm happy to host you. And I think you'll be quite pleased with not only the work, but also how it is that we would receive anyone. I mean that sincerely. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I do, I'm sorry, but the assessor's office decided, would you consider this? I didn't.
Can I give you a copy of that?
Exactly. I didn't have time to read it.
I'm so sorry, please excuse me, I was a good rapper, you're on the topic, so I...
Yeah, okay.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Jennifer, you, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, then, uh, close the hearing and you will get a...
I'm so grateful for your time today, sir.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right.
Ms. Persia, thank you so much.
Here we go. Okay, so is there anything further? Any public comments, questions?
So we'll meet on Friday, and then we, this is this week, and then the cases from the previous week, DC. And we have an excise board meeting at 9:00.
On Tuesday.
Off on next week.
On Monday.
Next, on the 16th.
All right, I thought I had it on Thursday. So it's on the 16th.
No, we meet Friday this week, I'm gonna do a new week of that excise.
Okay, okay, got it.
Tax rule and X.
Oh, you're getting it.
Tax rule and X.
I keep it clarified.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we can continue.
We do a adjournment.
I'll break it.
All in favor?